Free. But then down here in D. Any driveway must be comprised of dust free material for the length of the driveway within an access easement. I think it should be the total length of the driveway all the way to the gravel parking lot myself. I wanted to kind of run that by Joy and Patty, they were, and you too, Paul.
Well. Very assured. Kind of moved now because that dude already pulled all that gravel back through the east.
I, I grandfathered in now.
Until we get this. It is starting.
The, any.
Gravel now. It's grandfathered in, they can have.
So it's time to start.
Time to start Larry.
I don't, he gets over here, right?
Larry, did you get the clipboard on people that are signed in?
Yes.
Let's open the meeting, start the meeting.
You don't miss much.
Let's say pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let's make a motion, let's make a motion to accept the last minutes.
I'll second that.
Third.
Accepted. Kyler, if you're ready.
All right, so first thing I want to review with you guys is about the apartments. Over there, we did get the, the commissioners response, so I'm going to hand y'all each a copy of that.
That's Brian Combs apartment, right?
Yeah.
The one that was already inspected?
So basically. They're mostly concerned about the basement apartment. There is a tiny apartment down there with a window that doesn't open, right next to an electrical room. That somebody, two people are actually living in, um, it does not have proper ingress egress and the electric's not up to code. So we're going to request probably for them to. Either vacate or begin working with an electrician to assess the safety of that. Um, but we actually wanted to give that. To your guys' hands to see what kind of timeline you would like to allow them to begin working on this. So Nicole recommended thirty days in case they do have to vacate. And then, um, ten days or fifteen days to get that. Uh, electrician in there to begin looking at it because say the electrician looks at it, they can fix it maybe. Uh, with discussions with the building commissioners, they might be able to work something out where somebody could stay in it. Um, but yeah, that basement one is. Really actually a hazard. And then, uh. The only concern that the health department had, he did not get me his report, but I should have assumed is. The potential mold growth in one of the corner apartments in the building, so. That's what they'll be.
That can make people sick, you know?
Yeah.
Mold can.
Yeah, so that will walk, so have to have time designated all from you guys as well. Um, so you guys. Tell us how long you want to give them, then we'll send out the letter.
What do you think, fellas, thirty days?
I think what she said is thirty days.
Spot on.
I think I agree with that.
Thirty days.
And then the fifteen with the.
Yeah.
Ten or fifteen. Ten or fifteen days for your electrician.
nineteen fifteen.
Fifteen. That's good.
They're doing a lot of.
Yeah.
Because it's, I've seen that basement apartment. A little scary.
Yeah.
Did you actually go in there?
I.
Cause I, your facial expressions told me a lot.
Yeah. We don't want anybody to vacate or be homeless, but it really is.
It's bad.
Yeah.
It's better.
People have been in there a long.
Well, I've already had a report. From Aaron, he's sitting out here in the audience. His wife got definitely sick. From the mold. So, and he, he got, he got evicted right away. Uh, he's got what, two months, I guess, to get out.
Yeah, so the health department will be working with them to assess the mold. We haven't. Confirmed that there is mold, but there was not a downspout on the upper floor, all the water was pulling into that corner apartment. You could see the floor was dripping in.
Oh.
So there's a high probability that there is what we have on the front.
Yeah, I suppose the health department's going to go in and.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna be working with them based off of our comments and doing, you know, sort of T checks to make sure that. We're helping to get that two piece.
We went into it the first time.
With me, it was Nicole, Don Fager, um, Bill Shumpert, the.
Okay, so.
Yeah, all the works, all the. Um. And then the next thing is the West Harrison Central Park Lot, you know, that parking lot with the dumpster shared there? Um, on State Street. Next to Sinister Sound. Um, so they cleaned up the trash there. But when we went to look at that, they had permitted their. Storage containers to be in the back of the property, but they moved them towards the front, so we're gonna have them do a new permit for where they have them. But then we were also asking them to move their. Two trailers on wheels also back because they're partly in the right of way and then also they don't need setbacks and they. Even though they're on wheels, they're definitely there more than one hundred eighty days to the year. Um, but. The property owner was willing to permit moving his two not on wheels, but he did not want to. Move the two on wheels because he says where they're located, they're in view of the camera and there's expensive things in there. Um, so. We wanted to bring that before you guys see if you would be willing to allow them to keep. Their trailers on wheels up front, or if you want them to move through setbacks.
What do you think, Rick? What do you think, Paul?
Which way? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to picture where it is.
Adjacent to Sinister Sound.
Yeah, right across the center. Yeah.
On the big square lot.
Yeah, just the square with the alley behind it.
I don't see it. I don't see a problem.
Um, it's owned by West Harrison Center Inc. Center Inc.
Todd Smith.
Yeah, I think that's who I.
Todd Smith.
What? That's not his property, I'm gonna get to that next one, yeah, that's. Yeah, I'll get to that one.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the square lot on the corner?
Yeah.
He wants to keep.
He wants to keep, yeah, the trailers on wheels up front, they're like.
Ain't there a Conex box there or something?
The Conex, he agreed to permit those to their new location because when they were permitted, they were permitted back against the alley there, so he's fine with re permitting those. But he did not want to move the two trailers on wheels.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with where they're at.
No, I don't either.
I can see him feeling bold.
Other than they're an eyesore.
Yeah, they're an eyesore, but.
Yeah, that'd make you feel safer with them out there.
They want to have them for storage. They made them, they made them put a fence around them, but you could see it through there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the guy wants them out there for his safety.
He does, he does, he wants to be able to see them, he said they have cameras where the.
Keep an eye on them.
Yeah. I say they're fine with it, that's at the end of.
For sound stuff that's in the.
Um, one of them belongs to Sinister Sound and the other actually belonged to a cleaning company I found out. So they store their cleaning stuff.
I, I, if you guys don't see a problem with leaving them there, I don't, I don't see a problem.
Fine with it.
Yeah, if y'all are good with it, we're, we won't bother him on that, we'll just get his containers permitted, his Conex. And then. For Drew, his neighbor, the apartment buildings, he cleaned up the broken down car, the mattress and some of the trash. But he still left that fifty five gallon barrel. He called the office, he felt. It was not his responsibility, we of course notified him and it's his responsibility, not everybody is responsible for their own property. He blamed it on a lack of police presence, he said, people go and dump there and it's not. His tenants even, but how does someone else not have tenants? And so we can get him on to outside storage, like we can write him another letter down on outside storage. But we can't get him on how this materials, because I was gonna show y'all, um.
He, in other words, he's saying other people.
He's saying.
Are dumping stuff there.
Yeah, and he's saying, yeah, other people are coming and dumping there and it's.
It's his responsibility.
Yep.
That's still his responsibility to clean.
That's the apartment, next to the apartment.
The parking lot behind it.
Yeah, so there's the.
Where the crap old car was broke down and the barrel and.
Yeah.
Which.
Sets right on the alley.
Right.
So.
I don't know, I found out from you guys a couple of years ago that the.
Which.
The guy that owns the apartment. It's two different properties.
You were there yesterday? I swear I didn't see it. So I guess we'll get him.
Now, this is the apartment buildings.
What?
These are the apartment buildings right on this side of.
Across me old I G A.
Behind the Conex box?
Yeah.
Well, he does, he's all, I talked to him about the, the tenant.
Yeah.
Roofab owns that apartment building, Drew, yeah, Drew owns that.
Yeah, but you guys told me last month that whoever owns the apartment building doesn't know the property of it.
No, I thought you told me that as well, talking about this side.
Oh. Oh, okay.
And that's Sinister Sound owns that parking lot.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, I'll ask her, but I can't believe that was the apartment. I thought it belonged to Todd Smith.
I thought it was weird, I would think whoever owns the apartment building knows that.
Who actually, Kyler, who actually owns that parking lot, that big parking lot, Sinisterstown?
No, that's owned by.
By, uh.
West Harrison. Inc. It's an LLC. It's not, yeah, it's not all the same person who owns the apartment.
That's the one that owns the building, the Campbell Hospital Building.
What?
The old Campbell Hospital Building.
Oh.
That's the guy that owns that.
Sinister Sound is at the old Campbell Hospital Building.
So he owns that, yeah, he owns that lot, but he's not the same fellow.
It's been divided up between so many owners, you know, the.
Behind.
Behind the apartment building.
Yeah.
Does the guy that owned that apartment building own that lot?
No, they're different owners.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's, uh.
But his dumpster back there is in the alley. Anyway, what I was getting to is. Under your guys' hazardous waste ordinance, it says it shall be unlawful to store hazardous waste in the public right of way. For pickup, which includes any solid waste that because of its quantity concentrate or physical chemicals. Or infectious characteristics may cause significantly. Um, contribute to an increase in mortality or an increase in serious irreversible illness or pose a present or potential hazard to human health or the environment, right? But you guys only have hazardous material as an ordinance when it's in the public right of way. So the question is, do you guys want to? Us to draft an ordinance or amend this ordinance to include, you know, on private property or.
Yeah, man, I both amend it.
You think so?
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
So, yeah.
That's amended.
Yeah, to me, that's his.
Yeah.
That's his property, that's his responsibility.
It is.
To clean it up.
I agree.
Right, if it's in your yard.
The last thing is. The driveway ordinance that I sent out, but how are you guys feeling about that? I have copies too, you guys have copies?
And something else that you sent me, uh, Joy and Patty. At the lab meeting.
Yeah, we got it.
Were concerned about what type of material. Can be used down here for driveways.
Yeah.
And how long the driveway can be. From the, the road.
Yep, so. We didn't have like a restriction that we put in here for the end of the road, but we were saying forty feet back, that dust free material. The concrete asphalt milling, um, that same as accounting has dust free.
It states dust free.
Yes.
And it only states forty feet. Dust free from the road edge of the road into the property.
Yes, that's because there are sometimes. People prefer to do like a ground for parking, you know, their trailers and stuff like that. But if you guys prefer to be dust free all the way, that's fine, I can amend it, but.
But then the way it states, in D. Any driveway must be comprised. Of dust free material for the length of the driveway within an access easement.
So that is when somebody doesn't own the actual road frontage. Or their property, where they're using somebody else's property to cut the brew. And they've been granted an access easement, so basically saying if they're using somebody else's property. Adds their access to their house as their driveway that they have to make it dust free, that's what that is.
That's just like soccer field.
Yeah.
Entrance, get that easement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't easily, so for that, that would have to be dust free if they were to do that today.
Well, to me, dust free means asphalt.
I mean, asphalt, concrete and milling, it's just anything that's not going to generate dust.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is forty feet long enough? I, I don't know. That's Saint Leon's got that, now we don't have that. The only thing we have in our ordinance, I looked at the book. We've got the five feet from the property line. And the height of the residential house. But we don't have any driveway restrictions as to what material can be used. Can we amend this last part?
So.
And. And.
What?
And put it in our ordinance?
Yeah, so this is proposed for residential, I didn't see any driveway setback ordinances. For driveways, this would be putting in the setback, putting in. The material on, so we were gonna put this in strictly residential, so this would not apply to like commercial or business laws. Um. But yeah. We could, that's what this is like a proposed addition.
I would say amend the driveway part because we have this front part already. In our old ordinance.
Really? Um, do you know what part it was at? I'm certain.
Man, I don't have my book with me, I was looking through it today.
All right, because I did not see, I definitely looked through it, um, but I can confirm.
Well, double check me on that, but I don't think.
I know.
I think it would be in that building regulations. Yeah.
I didn't go down to find that, which you saying in our ordinance about that, that. Said the wording was like.
I found it today.
Yeah.
Do some, do you remember when zoning give us another zoning book with, uh. The new ordinances we've adopted? There's a page or a paper in our book.
Okay, so.
It gives all of that.
Yeah.
For West Harrison. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my question is. Is forty feet enough on asphalt?
No, you can't.
Forty feet's kind of a long driveway and then you can, then they say that you can go into a parking lot with gravel after that forty feet. To park carts, two carts per. Per resident. I don't know, but I kind of stepped it off in my house, what forty feet would be, that, that's, that's a pretty long driveway. But.
Yeah. They say it could, and if it could have dust because, right, it's not buying their house, it's asked for feet, it could be four, uh. Yeah, you need to change the length of some, I don't know, do something.
Longer than forty feet?
I think.
Now, see, the problem is, the problem is we can't change anything for stuff that's already sitting there, you can only change for anything new.
Well, yeah, what he's done, I think what Rick's saying, he's ground, he's grandfathered in. On all of his gravel he's put in there.
No, they're, they're talking about the house next to mine.
Oh, the house next to Paul. So forty feet would probably be okay with the house right next to you, wouldn't it? Forty feet of asphalt.
That house is.
Forty feet would take it right up to the steps, so it would take it right up to the front of that house.
Well, how long do you think we should make it? We can make it any length we want.
Or you can make it the entire thing.
I think the entire thing.
The entire thing.
Dust free.
That's what you guys.
Uh, I agree with that, the entire driveway.
I'll agree with that.
You too, Paul?
Look at our parking areas. If it's a designated parking area, it's not ingress egress, but they're storing stuff there, still all dust free, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I tell you what, we took a note to help the people down here. And that's what we're going to try and do, you know? But, and I appreciate you guys coming up and talking about that, Joy, Patty.
You know.
Yeah. Yeah.
We used to have a nice view.
Yeah, we used to do.
Yeah.
Well.
You want to amend what you have already to make it to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
But, um. Also, this is. One 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 sin helps. Doctor makes systems. He, it was affected by the health department, they're all the.
This is.
Thousand years.
Do what?
One one one.
What you're gonna.
Yeah, the, the last part of it, that's right.
They got what?
Their new.
Part B, where it says forty feet.
Would you go in there and check that out?
No.
It's a B and D.
Put in there instead of forty feet, the entire length of the driveway, entire length of the driveway.
Especially when you rode by on a motorcycle, you had to put through it.
Well, that's all I have, and then you guys have anything else?
I have another, but I guess this question would be. For our lawyer here. I went down to lock the park one night and we had two dumpsters back there, we, we put two every, every year for cleanup. I saw a young boy. Walking across the edges of these two drive, these two dumpsters. And I'm thinking, what if that boy would fall and bust his head off? Would, would West Harrison be liable? For medical? And anything that happens to him when he, he falls out of that dumpster? We, we, it's contracted.
Right, so they're grumping these dumpsters?
No, they're a place for S and S, uh. Escavating, S and S excavating, Milan, Indiana.
Yeah, I mean, anybody can sue anybody for anything, but, but first of all, you probably have insurance for random. Lawsuiting this down at the park, where is this, where do you put these dumpsters down at the park?
They're down in the park, all West Harrison property.
You have. Insurance for people suing you for injuries at the park, I don't think that would be any different.
Do we have that?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have lots of.
Probably not, no reason that you could be, it's not negligent to have dumpsters. In the park, so they would have to prove that you did something beyond just having a dumpster.
Yeah, you have to.
Made them, made them dangerous in some way.
Yeah.
For you to go out.
Okay, that clears that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyler.
You did a great job, thank you.
Aaron, you want to come up and say your piece, Aaron?
Yeah. Okay, how your water is in that apartment, everybody pays a fat way. So if you is my neighbor. Of six. I'm responsible to pay half of your water bill. I don't think that's fair for only two people in the household. To pay it. And there is black mold in all three properties, only one's been checked. He owns two more on State Street.
Yeah.
And it's the same problem, the wires outdated. Mold, it leaks. And when someone else has flushed the toilet, it comes out of a bathroom sink. Something needs to be done. And I mean, you guys giving them another thirty days. I don't know when they came out. I think the thirty days should start that day.
Well, did you listen to what?
Yes.
Probably, did you hear what Kyler said?
Yes.
So, uh.
Took thirty days start from that day.
Zoning. Zoning is talking about maybe vacating the building. And thirty days to. Give, give, uh, electricians or whatever to come in and repair what's wrong, so let's see what happens.
Yeah, because I think they should check the other two, because that's in bad shape too.
Yeah, I'll bet they are. Maybe those are the next two buildings we need to have inspection come in. The two on State Street, I don't know.
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
The wires outdated. The plumbing's bad.
Is that the blue array?
Yeah, and the one next to it.
With the crap unfortunate.
The same person that sent it to us.
Sure. That's, that's.
Or.
Did you see?
Yeah.
And my old lady was hospitalized from Wednesday to today at one o'clock because of black mold.
Is she getting better?
Yeah, she's, she's at her mom's right now because I won't let her come back.
No, I don't blame you.
And my son can't live with me because his wind is non accident. Before he was getting way fallen.
You say the floors have several holes in them all the way through.
Yeah, where, uh, one right over here. One A. When Melissa, that used to live there, she had a washing dryer. It overflowed, it went into the basement of Robin and Bill's apartment.
Oh, my.
And Brian never fixed it. All he did is put duct tape on.
Hate to hear it. Other words, all he's doing is collecting the rent money. And not putting anything back into the building.
He's a slow one.
So. What Morsy West is doing, they sending someone out from Indianapolis to my apartment and testing for mold. And if there's a mold, there's going to be a lawsuit.
No, I don't blame you.
Yep.
I don't blame you a bit.
Because my old lady almost died Wednesday night.
She was definitely sick.
My mold was in her lungs. She had to get blood.
That's serious.
And I mean, they tested what was in her system, it's straight up black mold.
I got a friend in Kentucky passed away three years ago because of that. He lived in a moldy apartment. His girlfriend would never stay there, kept telling him to get out of there. And he didn't get out and he ended up with mold in his lungs, died.
And like my boss, I do construction for that, my boss offered him. A bid to fix everything. He said, no, it's too hot. Like if he does do something, he's gonna find the cheapest. Way to get it done.
Yeah, that's.
It will be before Friday. Because I got a woman coming out. Probably Monday or Tu- uh, Tuesday or Wednesday to test it. Because my landlord at the time is going to.
Indianapolis, he said.
Indianapolis, I don't know where in Indianapolis.
Is she a private agency or is it government, with the government? Government?
Hmm. Yeah, because Morsy West is not too happy and they all. They come and apple him, well, hospital.
Well, let's see what we can get done with the health department and the inspections and, uh.
And what can Harrison do, Wes Harrison do for me, because I'm getting a vacation coming forward about my shitty landlord, sorry for my French. I mean, there's any program out there that.
Uh, I don't know, whether which.
Yeah. You want to get ahold of Denise Bowling? She's the Harrison Township. Trustee. And they have, uh. Funds available. You have to put up good reasoning for them and stuff like that, but they have. They have an account for that set aside to help people. What's her name again? Denise Bowling.
Denise Bowling.
You want her phone number?
Yeah.
Because it used to be a guy, wasn't it?
Her dad.
Yeah.
Ready whenever you are.
Ready, five one three?
Four.
Five eight two.
Five eight two.
Seven three six five.
So that's five one three, five eight two, seventy three, sixty eight?
Six five.
Okay.
And her name is Denise. Denise Bowling, like Bowling. B O W L I N G. And her name is Denise, Denise Bowling, like bowling, B O W L I N G.
So after the hospital, the person from Indianapolis come out and tested, you want me to get a statement and give it to you guys?
Well, that wouldn't hurt, I mean, it hurts, we're limited, that's. The stuff you're talking about, a part of that is, I, I think is. Out of, out of our jurisdiction, that's health department.
I was just gonna.
Yeah, he definitely was that, but the, she's the Harrison Township trustee, and like I said, they have funds. To help with somebody who's struggling or. Trying to get by, you know.
But I mean, uh, you do might wanna check with the water bill. The water bill, how he does it, say if. You live there, you got five people in your household, I'm paying as much as watering you, and it's not fair with two of us. And I think that's against the law.
Well, does Deiburn County, and I'm not aware, I mean, does Deiburn County, don't they have a service for renters? To landlord tenant dispute stuff? I mean, most. Most counties have something like that, and that's where you'd have to take something like that to where. And present that to them or.
Yeah, cause temporarily, I can't let my son live with me.
We have no control over water, you know.
And you guys don't know, I got almost a three-year-old boy that can't live with me because the health of that problem.
Yeah, I see. I mean, I can.
And now my soon-to-be-wife can't live with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got a crap landlord.
Yeah.
And I mean, Robin downstairs, she's always sick because of mold.
Yeah.
And I don't think that apartment should even be available. And my other thing is. Where, he won't let us have access to that basement if the tornado comes. We have nowhere to go.
Yeah.
I think that should be, he, his responsible to have that basin access for anybody in that building. Is there some kind of?
Department may vac- vacate the whole apartment building. Yeah.
Yeah, you're supposed to have a second way out of place. You're, most counties, you're supposed to have a second way out of your building.
Yeah.
So my question to you is, I did it on the second shore, if there's a fire in the hallway.
Would you put a bullet?
There's no fire.
Yeah. Right.
So I would have to go through the ladder. I mean, or fire.
Wouldn't wanna know somebody died because I didn't do the work.
And what I'm gonna do is, before I move, I'm gonna get with you guys, and let you go through my apartment, I'm getting all kinds of pictures. Look, I'm gonna. Cause I got a lawyer right now, I'm paying almost ten grand, I'm gonna sue. And I ain't gonna shop because that building's to them. And there's a roach problem over there, bad. I don't know if.
I don't doubt it.
If you go in the hallway, you don't see them, they everywhere.
Yeah, that's another health department thing.
Yeah, I was getting ready to go work.
Why?
I was getting ready to go work, 'cause I work crazy hours. But before I move, I'll get with you guys. Before you leave today, I'll give you my phone number. But I'm planning on being out there by before August fourth. And he did turn my record off, but I gotta, I'm getting ready to get it back on, and my name tipped work. And is there anything that a landlord can do? That, to turn, uh, turn your record off? Cause basically what he's doing that is, I came to you guys about the issue, he's doing everything to punish me.
He is, yeah, turn your electric off.
Hey. Like I said, you need to investigate and see if there's some, there has to be some kind of landlord tenant. Thing with the county.
Cause I went to the courthouse and I got the tenant lights, and he's, there's a lot of them, he's messing up.
Well, as I say, if you could document all these kind of things, approve these kind of things, you can, you can turn around and sue him.
No, I'm planning on it.
Retal- for retaliation and, you know. Persecuting your family because you're trying to stand up for yourself, you know, just want a decent place to live.
And I've been finding needles in the yard again, from a drug addict's awareness. Is there any way we can have a needle box somewhere, so if someone finds one, they can put it in there? Yeah, but sometimes you guys not here. And we don't have nobody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're best off not to touch them.
I'm just wondering about kids give the, before different.
Yeah, you're better, you're better off not to touch them and call and have somebody.
Cause I called once, Deiburn County never showed up, and there was kids playing, I'm afraid. They gonna. Find us. Wife's father. No, why on nine o'clock at night? And then they would show up when you call. Nine o'clock at night? Cause when I got home, I almost sepped one. It was right in the shore. Oh, if Deiburn County came, I can't hear you, just come over here.
It's Ohio.
Cause that's the only issue I had. But that's all I had.
Okay, thanks for coming up, Aaron.
Thanks.
Um, Joy? You wanna come up and say something?
What about this lady here?
Patty? No? Uh. We pretty much covered everything, I think.
Is she?
Uh, that's Aaron's wife.
Oh.
Yeah, he, he's pretty much told everything that's going on in their department, their apartment, uh. Well, fellas, do we have any, I'm sorry, what'd you say? Let's see, and he's not on the list, but you wanna come up? Mister Nose? Well, uh, do you have anything that you need to tell us about, or?
No.
Progressive anywhere with the house?
As of right now, Don Cooker's family still owns the property.
What, what property does he own still?
He owns the blue house, the white house. Uh, the four-car garage and the gazebo area. Or, yeah.
You didn't sell that gazebo, that, that lot to you?
Well, we have a contract for me to buy it, but it's not gonna happen for a while yet, 'cause they've gotta take care of some things that are in the properties.
You know, since you're doing such a good job making Wes Harrison look better, I'm gonna ask you a question, ask you if you'd do something.
Yeah.
That gazebo. I know that Don Cooker planted some ornamental plants around it. But a lot of it's filled in with weeds.
Mm-hmm.
And since you don't own it. I guess you, you doesn't go over weed eat or take any of it out.
Well, I, I can pretty much do what I want, I have a good relationship with the family, and they know that I'm gonna buy it, so, uh. I've been helping him clean out the four-car garage, it's got a lot of garbage in it.
I'll bet it's a mess.
It's a, it is a mess. So. It's just gonna take time because then.
Well, you've got the White House looking pretty darn good, and it looks better since you took, took, took them flower beds out front, looked a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will Jason talk about this car deal?
No.
Well, I. I, I'm wondering if we need a new car right now, is that? Just look it over, we'll look it over. Well, didn't you? I'm wondering, I'm wondering what it's gonna cost Wes Harrison if we have to take Bruce Summy and his mother to court. Over eight people living back here along the river again. Again.
James living again. He's outside of town, he's. On this, on the property that.
Yeah.
And they are asking the end, they're all ready to come down and get it cleaned up. So they're working, they haven't.
So he still got his machine gun, BB gun? He got in trouble a couple years ago with that. Yeah, he point, pointed it at somebody or something. Maybe that's what it was. Did you say that the Crown Vic, didn't you say the Crown Vic was a needle repair?
For back.
How much?
Yeah, cause Sarah Summy, she called, she left a message for me to call her.
Yeah.
And I, and I did, I called her and told her kinda what I knew just from our meeting minutes and the things that was going on. And I told her she needed to either talk to Kyla or Shelby.
Yeah, she's.
And they could tell her more.
Right, and I think she's got an attorney, 'cause she, when she heard that you guys are taking her court, they wanted to make sure that they were, but they're, I think, I think her attorney told her she needs to. Cooperate and get this fixed, so I think that's what happened, so now they're.
They're willing to, was it now?
Yeah, I think the suggestion, and it, it nothing, nothing finalized, was to get the town, uh. A, uh, an agreement where the, the town police could go on the property at any time as needed, without having to, you know.
They, they, if they reach an agreement with the town, and, and I don't know if this is gonna happen, but that was just a suggestion. That, that the town would have authority to go on the property as needed to get those people out, like.
Right. See, he doesn't wanna evict him. He evicted him once. He, go ahead.
We evicted, uh, we had another, there was only two of them. And he was living, he was trying to move this. But, uh, so, they left, and then he kind of was like, well, I'm worried about retaliation.
Yeah, that's, that's a message.
And I don't understand that at all.
Sure.
I don't understand that at all, retaliation, there's no way.
So I couldn't, he didn't want the police on the property, cause I didn't really have a reason to go on this property, unless we have all service.
Right.
Or, or something that, that makes you.
You build a shed back there?
Huh?
Build a shed? Well, anyway, that's, they're, they're, she'll, she'll fall apart when she gets back.
Well, that's good, that's good news. Yeah. You know, this has been going on since last August.
Yeah, she told me it's a problem.
And the bad part of it is, he doesn't wanna, he doesn't wanna think about the pollution. That's going in that watershed, that river. He told me, he said, what's, what's the difference? He said, you've got deer that go, raccoons that go in the ground. I said, there's a big difference. I said, there may be neeps going in the river, e- everything, human feces.
Yeah, it's nasty.
Nasty.
It sounds like maybe a small program.
Well, at least we're making some progress.
You never know.
Yeah, you never know.
You know.
Yeah.
My impression from conversations with a lot of people, he just really doesn't wanna be bothered with it.
Well, apparently if they hire an attorney, you understand he's gonna be bothered.
Well, we decided to go after him, 'cause I said, that's the only way you're gonna get their attention is, if it's gonna cost them money.
That got messaging across to some degrees.
Yeah, well, 'cause when she called me, I told her kinda what was, what I knew from our meeting minutes and all the different things. What was going on.
Yeah.
And I told her, 'cause she, apparently, when I talked to her, didn't know about the Board of Health. Wanting to go there, and they told them no.
Well, her son must not be telling her any of that.
She basically kinda turned that over to him to let him, so no one bothers.
And he's not telling her all the whole story.
So, they notified her, they own her the property.
She's the owner of the property.
So hopefully it helps and she gives.
Let's see what happens, thank you.
I got some stuff here that you guys gotta sign, all this and some bills, if you don't have anything else.
We don't, do we have any other business? What about you, Paul, Rick?
Nope.
Nothing?
Yep.
Uh. Hey, Jason, Tom Marshall, you have anything?
They all owe me.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand something a year for five hundred.
Okay, we'll look it over.
That's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Crown Vic goes by cost.
Well, we've already talked to our attorney. Pay the bills?
I got this one here, this first one, this is a, a resolution I need to.
Yeah, you guys can leave if you wanna.
This is the fun.
Bye, Joy. This is, thanks for coming up.
Yep.
Thank you for coming up.
Yep. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
You, are you heading towards Larnesburg or anybody, man? You may need to take Larnesburg Road and take fifty on it.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the, the best way to get there when I get up.
That bridge, man, that one, down to one lane, oh my gosh. Yeah, I know. Sounds good, that sounded like a good idea.
I got a shop in my house.
Good idea, Danny, do us.
What are you waiting on?
She was parked up here again, maybe a hint to him.
Well, I told Jason.
He parked her up there the other night.
I know, and you sat up there.
And I went on some picnic table, see what he's doing, did you see me?
Now, the next time, the next time I see him, I'm coming out, and I'm gonna tell him, I appreciate it, he don't comes down here anymore, because this is not a camping bar. And, and he can't offload his, uh, garbage.
Your girlfriend too, wives, okay, she goes to the bathroom, cleans up.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I think it is, she's going in there and using the restroom just to clean up. Okay. And dump her trash, 'cause the last time they stayed overnight, they dumped all their trash in that little trash.
Yeah.
What's that?
Minutes.
That's a minute.
Someone else got a sign.
Went backwards, signed.
That's 'cause he sent, he sent his. All right, now. This is a, this is a resolution I have to do, 'cause right now I'm doing the budget for next year, okay, so all the stuff to do there. And like last month, we had.
Got a new car?
For. Public safety to pay for the fire trucks and all that. This is for, uh. Motor vehicle, for the police car and all that stuff to pay for fuel and stuff like that, I, we don't, you know, we don't get enough money. From the state, so I'm gonna transfer fifteen thousand from Riverboat into that account.
And then.
When the money comes around next year, it will be enough.
It'll be enough to cover.
I had to do this layups for two. We have a few parents that are like that, where we have to transfer. We don't get enough money from the state. Oh, it's over the far. So we have. Same thing now. And say, no, I did pay off, uh.
Insurance.
The police, um, for the, uh, well, that's all taken care of, other than. Still waiting for that. And I did, I was paying the interest for the city. Uh, they were still a good sized chunk.
Might have been a cash.
And it's, it'll be, it's in these, these state financials, if you want it, but. These are three different, uh, payroll, guys just got signed.
Will you got Paul, anything for me?
Uh, Paul, where'd that last one go, we signed?
You got him all the meeting minutes and all that.
Let Paul have it to end. Let Paul have it to end.
There you go, Paul.
You see, we did a, they chucked this one, that's because. And actually.
I don't need a lot, like I didn't, like how I vote sitting in the grass there, I just wanna do a little bit over there, so it's that one wheel. Instead of putting it in grass, that's all I want.
We're pretty slow about.
I just don't want that house next to me. Have a gravel drive to the street, and then he wants, he says, put a big enough space for like six walkers back there.
Well, here's what they do, they take on too much work, and they jump from one job to the next, they don't finish any one job.
Ask them about the signs.
I don't have, there's a limit on how many like recreation.
Rick, you wanna take that job, honey?
Take that job, we'll take the signs, we can go down the frontier and get them to make. Whole setups for it.
We, I'd say go to frontier sign, and we're gonna need two posts for every, every sign, because in big long signs, you've seen them.
Don't they try to get one on each side?
I think so.
I think there's three different.
How many signs are going?
Actually, six signs.
And, and they give us places to put them, right? And Rick will need that.
Yeah, we can get that.
What he told me is just doing crap.
He called, huh, wants to know if we're, how far along we are.
Stamped it all down.
You know what's weird is they shut down the, up at Metamore, they shut down funding for the.
But, uh, block. I was joking, oh, I was like. And then his wife wanted to be here in the winter.
So right now, that's all I'm thinking.
I said, I'm gonna ask him if I'm paying forty bucks a month to put my boat in there while he's. Just to keep it out of the elements. Maybe I'll get Mitchell to ask him, cause Mitchell's friends. His big RV in there and my boat.
They have another account.
I actually pulled in there, uh, when, uh. I was trying to fix something on the boat, pouring down rain, and I asked him, hey, can I get my boat in there so I can work on it? And then I'm pulling right back out, and I said, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, my nephew was with me, he's like, man, he's fitting all kinds of stuff in here. But I think that's why he fits the door on the other end, cause what plan is, he's gonna pull in to that front door. Turn to the right, and then back it in, and that, that way he has a way to get out.
This is, this is the basic for our insurance for the buildings and stuff like that, like they'll be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right, I would.
I spend probably.
Oh, it's a little white building.
And there's a lot more to it. And it's alive this.
Well, I think we did pretty good at our meeting, didn't I?
Oh, it ain't off, it took, we can do it, but you adjourn the meetings.
In other words, watch what you say.
The video's over.
I feel tired for that guy living in that.
I do too.
In that crap house, but it's not, it's not our responsibility to. To provide a nice.
We can actually recommend places to help him, though, there, there are places.
Yep, that's what I told him about.
Quite a few Harris Township, Dillon County, I mean, it's all kinda come out of large short problem.
Well, Denise Molling does that, but she's pretty tight with that money, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard to get anything out of her.
I do too.
But there's quite a few that do.
Yeah, just sucking their money out of women, they don't care how they live, you know, that's, that, that makes me mad.
Me too.
Especially when, when the same guy owns the, the both buildings.
My wife, she actually wants me to sell mine, she's.
Oh, really?
Just when it's so getting older and so, it's a lot to take care of.
But you've been lucky with your renter too, you've had some good ones, but you've had to evict some too, ain't you?
You know, potential buyer right there.
He won't pay what I want. I don't think.
I think he's already got enough out.
Your house is all one property.
All are on the same property?
It's listed as. I, I had to change the, do stuff down. Five bedroom, four to five bedroom, it's too vast, the other one, so eight hundred. It's all right, I built it, it's. I don't charge it, like, cause I guess, like, what could I give?
Fifteen hundred dollars at today's rates.
I just spent on my mom's, so I ran into her, and I knew she could.
My mom right on top of the hill.
Doing your job, I was sitting on State Street, she was like Saint Peter. I'm standing running radar, and his dude was standing at his front door, and he just keeps looking at me, I waved at him.
It's gonna make you feel good to help and take care of them too.
If you're looking at, yeah, to the right.
Let me sign these last ones and wait till Rick gets back, and we'll adjourn the meeting.
The city is already. I saw a couple people stopping to look at.
All the one, they, they started on it and stopped, and then just left it, and.
I have to call him just to try and help him now, I thought they'd send a little church or something.
I think they had boat right construction there for a while, I think it was. You, maybe they own that house, I don't know.
My cousin says this is, yeah, here. We want the driveway, all the way, all the way back, I'm glad we got that far.
All it needs total.
Feel better now?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Let's go get something to eat, though.